Seven thirty, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the City of Miami Regular City Commission Meeting. We are still hybrid and virtual. Today is Wednesday, January the sixth, and it is seven thirty P M. Thank you all for being prompt and being here. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the directions to join with Zoom for the conferencing.
Yes, Madam Mayor, good evening everyone and Happy New Year again. This hybrid meeting is conducted pursuant to resolution approved by the City Commissioner on October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The instructions to participate in the virtual commission meeting is that the public may join the meeting via Zoom at HTTPS colon slash slash zoom dot U S slash J slash three two five five two three six zero five nine. To submit live remote public comments, the person wishing to submit the live remote public comments will appear live on the TV screens and in the commission chambers during the meeting and will be afforded three minutes to speak. Please submit your last name and first and last name for the records. To access the virtual commission meeting by phone, first dial one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. When you connect, a machine will ask you for the meeting I T. Then dial three two five five two three six zero five nine followed by a pound sign. Wait a few minutes until the host accepts you and gives you access to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I don't see anyone from the public wishing to join, so throughout the meeting, if you do have somebody to call again or emailing, please advise me. Let's continue. Next item for the invocation, Madam Manager, please. All rise.
Thank you. Please rise. Let's bow our head this evening as we begin the year two thousand and twenty one. We asked the Lord, we remain in prayer for hope, peace, and stronger faith. We pray for those gathered here at our first city commission meeting of two thousand and twenty one and those whom we serve at home. Give us the guidance so that we can walk by faith into this new year, giving thanks to God for his compassion and righteousness. We pray for the disappearance of COVID and other diseases that have led to such tragedies and loss of life. We pray for our law enforcement officers and first responders and military personnel who have devoted their lives to serving and protecting us and our borders, especially this evening in our nation's capital. We pray for all the residents of the city of West Miami and all those who labor for our city as we welcome in a new year. Lord, we give you thanks and praise. Amen.
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 Face the flag. Our leaders this evening. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Flag.
For the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll call.
Item three, welcome. Mayor Ronder Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minister approval, none this evening. Next item, item five, public comments. We don't have anybody from the public to, for the public comments, Madam Mayor, as of now.
Thank you. I want to welcome Elliot, Mr. Elliot Asville is here. Mr. Asville, did you have anything for public comments this evening? And Elliot says no. Thank you for being here, sir. It's always a pleasure. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item six, report of a city manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. First and foremost, I want to wish everyone and your family a very happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. That being said, I'd like to cover a couple of items. The city intends to resume passport services on Monday, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty one. Now that we have the glass panels in the front area that we are slowly but surely accommodating for passport applications. We will resume the same time schedule and again, we will reevaluate the situation in the coming weeks and we will adapt and proceed accordingly. If we find that we have problems or any other type of COVID-related situation, we will certainly bring those to your attention and reevaluate the situation as we go along. The Plexiglas was already installed throughout the holidays and now we are waiting for the Plexiglas to be installed in chambers. On Monday of this week, as we returned to work, tropical glass was out here taking final measurements. So I spoke to Mr. Penna today and he advises that it appears that our panels will be in place by the January twentieth, two thousand and twenty one city commission meeting. The next item in my report is that construction is underway for phase one of the potable water improvement. I don't know if our city engineer wants to chime in. We spoke today about the progress of the construction and either now or during his report, he may want to brief you as to that progress. Madam Mayor, do you want to hear from him now or wait until the time of his report?
Alonzo, would you like to do it at the time of your report or you want to do it now?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Finish the report and then I'll, yeah.
Right. So I will yield that report to our city engineer. And the last thing I wanted to cover is we've been looking, Mr. Penna and I have been talking during the holidays. We spoke about purchasing what they call an electrostatic cleaning equipment. And basically what this equipment does, it cleans any trace of possible bacteria that gets left behind by people who visit or work at City Hall or the general public. Am I correct, Mr. Penna, in that description? Now, this piece of equipment, if we purchase it, which is within the purchasing power of the city manager's office, it's an equipment that we can use on a daily basis. And we will see whether we can get by with one electrostatic equipment or if there's a need to purchase two. I think we should start by one and see how efficient we become with using the equipment. That way, we can reduce our expenses now that CARES Act ceases to exist, at least for now, as of December thirty first. I think that we can purchase this equipment and be efficient and also be proactive in trying to minimize, you know, the possibility of further infection by coronavirus or any other type of disease that may be out there. It basically identifies the traces of any of the virus and it kills it. I don't know, Juan, if you have gotten into the depth of how it works. I know that it works with a particular type of lighting system. You may want to elaborate or expand on that, but right now, our recommendation is that we proceed and purchase the equipment so that we can start saving a little bit of money and address efficiency at the same time. That concludes my report and if you have anything, any questions, I'm more than happy to respond to that.
I do, Madam Manager. On this electrostatic cleaning equipment, what is the estimated cost of that?
It's about twenty-five hundred dollars.
And why didn't we look at purchasing this so that we could have claimed it as a reimbursement when we were getting the money back from COVID?
Because the CARES Act was covering, covered the cost for the sanitation by an outside contractor through December thirtieth.
Wouldn't this have been possibly a reimbursable cost? We were buying it so when the CARES money stopped, we would have it to continue sanitizing.
Yeah, maybe we should have looked at it, but I think that the job that the company, which is called S F M, was doing for the city went beyond a piece of equipment for the daily sanitizing. You're talking about sanitizing of vehicles because that has been done by the contractor. And, you know, it's just something that I guess came up at the tail end of this conversation and that's pretty much the honest response to it. I think we were reacting to COVID and everything that we heard from other cities, what other cities were doing. And these things come up in the managers' meeting, as they come up in the mayor's meeting of the League of Cities and these are just things that come up and some cities have, are looking into the purchasing of this equipment rather than contracting because they also want to find savings and efficiencies along the way. So it's a one-time investment versus continuing to pay a contractor, whatever it is that we're paying them every time they come and clean.
Okay, very good.
And it can be used on a daily basis.
I have a question.
Or you can go ahead.
The vice mayor has one after you, Commissioner.
What kind of equipment is this again?
It's called an electrostatic cleansing equipment. It provides some kind of lighting.
How is it used? How is the application?
Juan, do you have a little bit more information? I know you were looking at the different models.
I mean, what do you do? You jump in it? You?
No.
Throw yourself with it? You walk through it? What do you do with it?
We could possibly use it as a car wash type of thing. But it itemizes the water and the chlorine mixture to a minute, a minute size of droplets to be able to spray buildings or vehicles and kill the bacteria that's on surfaces. Basically what we're paying for S F M to do.
So this is a big contraption?
No, it's a small handheld unit backpack type of thing that you put on your back with the mixture and you spray the buildings with.
So we would have to get the chemicals that it takes to be able to continue its use, correct, Penna?
You know what? There's nothing like good old soap and water.
This is water.
And friction, washing hands and using rags, you know? I don't know. I think this is just a waste of money, if you ask me. That's my, like, two bids on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor has a question. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Madam Manager, is this the equipment, is this the type of equipment that S F M uses?
I don't know. I think it's a commercial-grade equipment, Juan. I haven't, I mean, I see the guys that come here and spray, but I can't tell you what equipment they use. You're probably more in tune with them than I have been. I think it works with a sprayer system, but I don't know if the container is the same, if it has the same capacity to hold the chemicals, the cleansing chemicals. I'm not sure. Are you sure, Juan, at this point or?
At Home Depot, you can buy a sprayer for thirty-nine ninety-nine.
It's a smaller, it's a smaller unit than the one used by S F M, but it actually does the same minute particulars when it's spraying the water in the chlorine mixture. You don't want to douse everything in your building and wet every piece of paper that you have. This sprays it and you're able to land it on top and it doesn't damage paper, doesn't damage equipment, it doesn't damage electronics.
How much, how much is each spray when we pay S F M, when we contract with S F M, when we were doing it under the CARES Act?
It depends on how many buildings we do at a time, but it's anywhere from four hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars per sprays.
For what, sir?
For a spray session.
First spray session. And how often were we doing that? Or how often did we manage to do that?
We were doing it before we were COVID contaminant. We were doing it once a month. After we became COVID contaminant, we were doing it at least once a week.
And these are?
Okay.
Go ahead.
If I may, to your question on the money that we're spending, the initial proposal that was sent to Mr. Penna back in May for the services provided by S F M along with other companies, and I have actually a picture of the equipment that they use, is the labor equipment and supplies to apply the EPA-approved disinfectants to all vertical and horizontal surfaces throughout the office spaces was for an area of seventy-five hundred square feet. The cost was four hundred and fifty dollars per session. The multipurpose facility at the recreation center was two hundred and seventy dollars because it is a forty-five hundred square foot building. So the one session, as Mr. Penna said, is seven hundred and twenty dollars. Then the additional fleet for the disinfecting as needed at the time would be billed at thirty dollars per vehicle for a minimum of three hundred dollars for the vehicle's service. Now, the first round of fleet disinfecting, I believe they offered it for free for thirty vehicles. I don't know if that is correct. Pete, you're nodding your head yes. So I believe they offered that for free the first time and then it would be billed at thirty dollars per vehicle.
What are the chemicals for each spray?
I'm sorry, sir?
How much is a spray? How much is a chemical plaster?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the.
I watched the chemicals, posters for each spray session. We have to do with this.
I am not there yet in terms of the cost of the actual
It's in the proposal.
Disinfectant itself, the chemicals that are used. Juan, have you priced the maintenance end of it?
It was on the proposal. We were buying four gallons of the mixture from them, which each gallon, I believe, generates seven hundred and forty gallons.
That seems, okay, that seems pretty.
Yeah, it's a pretty dilute.
Especially if we can get by with one machine. If that are S F M, I mean, you get, basically get the money back in five sessions. Obviously, we have to go to three machines. It's, you know, it's starting to lose the savings a little bit, but, I mean, I have one machine that, you know, four hundred dollar a session for the City Hall and Recreation Center. I guess the police department and the vehicle.
So we've been looking at what we estimated for the CARES Act. We estimated that this would probably, the disinfecting of City Hall or city facilities, if you would, would come at a cost of about seventy-five hundred dollars and that's what we uploaded to the CARES portal. But we've come to the end of where we can, you know, we need to stop now billing them because the time has elapsed on being able to continue applying for reimbursement for those dollars.
I understand. I think it's important that we obviously sanitize and it's also important that we reduce that issue. So we can do it ourselves and this equipment is approved, you know, approved to work, then I think it's a savings in my favor.
I do know that some cities have purchased it, again, beyond December thirtieth because now you're looking at long term and from all indications is we will have to live with the effects of the virus here for probably another eight to ten months, realistically speaking. That is, if there's no other mutation or any other variations. And so all we need to do is take a proactive approach. And I also think that it gives employees a sense of security that, you know, that we are taking them serious and their health, that we are taking precautionary measures to ensure their well-being. If anything, I think that's worth the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Mr. Penna, what is your plan for how often will you be doing this? And will you be doing all city property, including the red, you know, everywhere? How often will you be doing this sanitizer through this machine?
If we could do it on a daily basis, that's what we intend to do.
A daily basis, everywhere?
All the equipment, yes. All the buildings.
Okay.
All of our facilities.
All of our facilities, okay.
Right. And Mr. Penna and I discussed, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission, that if there's a need to buy a second equipment because, you know, obviously because we want to be effective, we want this to work and maybe, you know, we decide that one equipment is not going to be enough or one, you know, one unit is not going to be enough, then we will come back to you and advise you of that. And it's pretty much a cost that can be absorbed by one of our operation accounts.
Okay. Elliot has his hands up. Elliot, do you have a question, sir?
My question as a business person is this is a mechanical device. And I have to tell you, I certainly would be inclined to do it. As was stated, it's for no other reason to get the COVID as us complying and showing our workers and the public that we are looking to protect them. As there is a litiable issue, if in fact you do not do something, you're possibly going to get involved with a legal suit. So I advise it from that standpoint. You know, the difference I have with the proposal, if it was my decision, is because this is a mechanical device. At some point, for some reason, it will break or not be able to do what it's supposed to do. I always in business, whatever I purchase, for whatever reason, I always have a standby, be it a lawn mower, be it a this, be it pipe, be it whatever, so that I am always capable. So the only difference would be I would go ahead and purchase two units to begin with. And again, the motivation would be that it does not occur a lapse in time by malfunction where you are now running, trying to get it and set it up and so on and so forth. You would have, obviously, if that happens, taken away everything that you intended to show and do for both the public and your workers.
Thank you, sir. On that note, are these machines readily available? Are they readily available?
Yes, it should take about a month to get it in.
A month to get it?
Yeah.
That's my point.
It's not like you're going to Walmart.
No.
No.
All right.
And in the meantime, we will continue to use S F M or the whatever environmental measures need to be taken to disinfect City Hall with the same level of continuity that we have been providing here.
Well, with that placed, your savings go down. I would go for the second machine.
It is not something that we're voting on, right? This is something that you're going to?
You're just discussing at this point.
I'm bringing it to your attention because I feel it's important. I'm sure you talk to your constituents. They walk in here to City Hall to pay their bills or to transact business and it also gives them a level of security, if you would, or a level of comfort to walk in here and understand that we're doing everything we can to keep the facilities clean for them and for the employees of the city, for the general public.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
I think this is the main reason why, if we have to have that type of equipment, is because we have constantly visitors. We don't know who they are. They come for passports, they come to pay bills, they come to ask questions, they come to where is police department and we don't know who they are, we don't know where they come. So if we have a good reason for that is that, that we have a lot of people coming to the city every day.
Thank you, sir. So Madam Manager, this was your report?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, unless the commission is overwhelmingly opposing the measure that we are intending to take here long term, I will proceed and purchase the one unit and again, reevaluate it. Maybe thirty days down the road, we will be in a reevaluation mode once we decide that it's effective, that we like the results, that, you know, that we should be using it maybe in our parks, not only inside the buildings but outside, maybe in our recreation facilities. We want to know how the equipment works. There's training involved within it. So we want to get to know the equipment and its benefits before we invest five thousand versus the first twenty-five hundred dollars.
Madam Manager, right off the bat, I absolutely think we should be using this in our parks and recreation center, if any place, on the playground equipment and in the recreation center. That, I mean, that's not even a thought. I mean.
Right. And we don't disagree, but what we'd like to do is see how effective the machine is, how friendly, how people, you know, user-friendly it is. We'd like to see, you know, the training, how it goes with our facilities personnel and how we will start to put it into action on a daily basis. So I would go with one and maybe immediately thereafter, we will come back to you and tell you, you know what? It, we do need a second machine. But we want to, at least I'd like to see how the equipment works before we invest five thousand versus twenty-five hundred.
Can I say something?
Commissioner, go ahead.
I'm all for it, even though I don't agree with it. But is there any science behind this piece of equipment that it works? And how are we going to know if it does work? I mean, how are you going to measure that?
By not having any repeat cases of COVID.
Really?
Yes, sir. Right now you have.
I'm all for it. I am all, I'm all for it. Go ahead, spend the money. But, you know, there's, you know, I mean, what's the science behind this? How are you going to measure the effectiveness of it?
It's the same science that.
You know, you know, you could have, I mean, I don't know.
It's the same science that S F M has shown us that they come out here and they do every building with the.
What science? What, I mean, what, I mean, what, really? What paper? What paper? Did they give you a paper? They told you this, 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 you know, we're doing this because scientifically it's been proven.
No, no, no. They're following the recommendations of the Health Department and that's what we are supposed to be doing as a public entity, following the recommendations of the Health Department.
The Health Department, okay. All right. Good enough.
Okay, Madam Manager, I do believe it is unanimous that we agree you should purchase one. Is, am I, did I misunderstand? Is there anyone opposed to the manager proceeding, purchasing one and then very soon after, if it works, to go ahead and purchase the other one? Obviously, then he must know.
Madam Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
I believe so strongly from experience and breakdowns and achieving goals and being proactive that I would say and offer to the city of West Miami order to, before the next meeting, I will present the check to the general fund for two thousand five hundred dollars. That's how strongly I feel in terms of the necessity, the legal protection, the comfort, and so on and so forth. And I would make that offer. Those that are here know my past history in terms of financial response, taking financial responsibility on many different occasions for things. I don't believe in wasting money. But this to me is so important, even it's to fail. You do away with the litigation thing that you have tried to do everything that's humanly possible, like your Plexiglas, wearing masks, so on and so forth. This is just another situation. Visual means more than words. And I make that pledge here and now, which if in fact it's chosen by the commission to reject my pledge, that's fine. I happen to feel very strongly about what I'm saying.
And Mr. Asville, is that for the second machine?
Yes. I heard that it's costing twenty-five hundred. That's the first machine. I understand the manager's reasoning and I can't say that I totally disagree with it. It is not as proactive as I like to be or put myself in a position and therefore I am willing to try to ensure that this is not only visually good, but is practically good on all occasions, meaning a spare. Or you train two people and you get the job done more quickly or maybe more expensively. Again, I could understand. Uh, 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 again, I could understand uh, the manager's thinking and responsibility. She, like I, is fiscally conservative and watches the city's money. I watch my businesses' money. Uh, but this, I think, is worthwhile and therefore the offer.
Thank you, Mr. Esbel.
Thank you, Mr. Esbel.
Do you have any opposition from this table to accept Mr. Esbel's donation of two thousand five hundred for secondary electrostatic cleaning equipment? I have, upon hearing, no opposition. Mr. Esbel, thank you for your generosity.
I, I will tender it. Uh, I come in next Wednesday. I only come in on Wednesdays now. I switch from Thursdays. I will look to tender the twenty-five hundred to the City of West Miami General Fund, uh, trusting that each and every person understands, uh, what the intention is for the use of those funds.
Absolutely, sir. You'll see this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're quite.
Thank you. Thank you, Elliot.
You're quite welcome.
Did that end your report, correct?
That ends my report.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. Item eight, report of the city engineer, water main improvements project phase one.
That book, you skipped the attorney. You skipped that.
Oh, oh, you're right, you're right, Madam Mayor. Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Thank you. Next item.
And then item eight, report of the city engineer, water main improvement project phase one.
You had me scrambling to find my unmute button.
Get your time. See, I knew you were scrambling, so I gave you a little bit of time to find it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Um, yeah, so I, I did give a full report on all the ongoing projects, uh, both pending and ongoing in the last meeting, so I think today we'll just give an update on uh, what's going on with the water project. Um, I had a meeting this morning with our inspector and I meet frequently with Jose, who's overseeing the project, Jose Messi, and things are progressing quite nicely. Uh, I also met earlier this week uh, with Juan and, and some of the city staff, uh, just to kind of go over some, some issues of coordination with some of the service locations, uh, and that type of thing. So things are progressing well. Uh, contractor is done with about half of Silvania and they're working their way north, north. Uh, so from a construction perspective, we're pretty happy on the pace that they're going. Um, I, I did speak with uh, Madam Manager today regarding some issues of uh, dust, uh, which of course is, is typical of, of a project like this. It's a, it is an intrusive project, uh, but, um, so, you know, there's, there's various ways which the contractor controls dust. Obviously, they use water trucks to, to spray out there. Uh, we have, uh, you know, we have noticed that they're not probably doing as often as they should. Uh, so we're having that discussion with them tomorrow to make sure that uh, they increase the frequency with which, uh, they go out there with the water trucks and maintain dust control. Um, I, I did hear a suggestion about perhaps closing Silvania during the duration of the construction and providing detours, uh, so that traffic doesn't cross and, and continuously pull up dust. Uh, that does, that does pose an issue to the construction schedule. Uh, you know, the contractor's moving at, at such a pace that I, you know, they're probably gonna be done with Silvania within the next, uh, you know, two weeks or so. So it's, by, by the time that, you know, we go to the county and, and try to solicit a permit for detours, which we would have to do if we're gonna, we're gonna close, uh, close the road off. Uh, you know, by the time that we get response from the county and, and approval to do the, to do that type of detour, they're gonna be done. So, um, I really don't think that's, um, that's really the way we should go. I think we should continue with the, the maintenance of traffic that the contractor is doing and just, you know, try to, uh, hammer down the fact that they need to, uh, have proper dust control out there uh, and, and, and close the trenches and make sure that the road is usable at the end of the day. Um, but I think that's, in my opinion, that's part of the better approach. Just take a more proactive approach with them and, and make sure they're doing the things they need to during construction. Uh, but with that said, I, I know there's some concerns, so I'll, I'll be happy to field any questions.
I have a question. Uh, has there been complaints, um, about the dust? Is that where that, where that comment came from? I mean, is it?
That's my, yeah, that's my understanding, that the cities receive some, some complaints from neighboring residents.
Um, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, mainly, um, the, the, the main concern with, uh, a couple of the residents that, uh, live adjacent to, to the road that, that's being worked on is after the, uh, the workers left for the day, uh, the street was opened up.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, uh, the road happens to be Silvania and cars do not really travel through there that slowly.
Understood.
They're, they, they drive through speeds over forty miles an hour. So when they do that, they kick up all the dust. So it became a dust bowl. There was quite a bit of traffic after, you know, the, the workers left. So that's what the issue is.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna make a visit out there tomorrow. Um, I haven't been out there uh, since before the holidays, so I'm gonna run through there tomorrow, meet with, meet with the contractor and just kind of take a look at, um, you know, how they're leaving the site and, uh.
I don't think we can do anything about the wind, but I think that we can do something about the traffic.
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, closing off the road is, is really, it, it's, it's just, i- it's just not gonna work, you know, the, the, the way that this, you know, for the contractor to set up that type of MLT, uh, to set up detours, it, it's not, it's not as simple as closing the road. They're gonna, they have to route detours all throughout the city and that requires a county permit, which, like I said, by the time we get that permit, they're gonna be done with work. Um, and the setup for the MLT before and after is just gonna throw off the entire schedule. So, you know, at, at this point, I think the best course is to really just hammer down with them and, and make sure that they're providing proper dust control. Um, and that's what, that's what the discussion we'll be having with them tomorrow. Um, you know, other than that, you know, it's, uh, it's just making sure that they're doing what they're need to do to keep the site safe and clean when they leave at the end of the day.
Okay, thanks.
So Frank, do you think they weren't doing it as, as often or as much as they should have and that's what caused the problem?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's the stuff that contractors always try to get away with, you know, they try to do as little as possible. That's why you guys hire us and, 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 and folks to oversee what they're doing to make sure that, that they're not, uh, you know, trying to get away with doing as little as possible, so.
Okay, so hopefully after that, they, you know, there should be a little control.
Yeah, I mean, my, my message to them is basically gonna be, you, you guys need to improve your dust control. We're gonna force you to close this road and do a detour, which I guarantee you, they're not gonna wanna do, so.
Okay. Okay, and, and, Madam Manager, if we continue getting complaints, please be sure that, um, that Mr. Esbel knows and.
Yeah. And I think one, one thing we'll try to do is, as soon as they're done with Silvania, um, you know, because typically they'll wait to the end of the project when everything's done to restore. Uh, as part, as part of my discussion with them, it's, you know, I'll, I'll see if, if we can accelerate, at least, you know, the restoration of the road, once they're done with those, those main lines, so that we don't have to wait, you know, months, uh, that, so that the road doesn't stay open for months and, and we can do that. That may, you know, we'll discuss that with them. That may prompt, uh, some additional costs because, uh, that's not the way that they typically bid a job, you know, they, they typically lay out all the pipe, come back and do the restoration work at the end for the entire project. Uh, but I, you know, just being that, uh, the situation, the way it is, it may be a good idea to have that discussion with them and see what type of impact it would have on the, on the budget.
Um, Madam Mayor, if I may, may add something to that and in the, and I know speed was mentioned by Commissioner Blanes. I've been out there a couple of times on Silvania and I've seen officers, um, monitoring the traffic and I've seen officers issuing citations to those that are going over the speed limit, um, over the weekend and over the holidays. Um, I, I actually interacted by saying hello to some of our officers and they were actually doing, uh, radar and, and just, uh, monitoring the flow of traffic in the area. But we all know that Silvania is used as a pass-through road and um, i- it's impossible to have an officer uh, there twenty-four seven, but this being said, I yield to the chief um, for his use of, of allocation of manpower and the major. And maybe we can put a little bit of extra manpower out there during peak hours that would, uh, reduce a little bit the, the, the traffic and, and, uh, speed in the area.
If I may?
Yes.
Well, good evening to all of you and I will go ahead and just, uh, remind uh, the contractor or, or whoever's in charge of the contractors, I, I, I assume it's Frank, that they were supposed to have off-duty policemen and pay for off-duty policemen to be with these contractors. And maybe that'll slow down the traffic. However, we'll still, we're still waiting for a call and the contractor to, to go ahead and put us out there.
Okay, I wasn't aware that they were not doing that. I'll follow up with them on that tomorrow.
They have not done it since they started.
Okay.
I do believe with that and, and the, the water, I think we have it pretty much well under control. Are there any other questions, um, for the engineer on this? Okay. Next item. Frank, is that it for your report?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Next item.
Item nine, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I have none, um, but I just want to ask Madam Clerk, the person, the, um, I admitted a, a phone number here. Do we know if that's Adrian? The gentleman that was going to be part of, Adrian, or is that you that has joined the meeting? Are you that seven eight six two five two five one oh seven?
No, that's, uh, Mrs. Leon, our finance director.
I didn't say that's, because I was expect, we were expecting, um.
Adrian.
Yeah, I'm from the University of Florida. I didn't know that was him, so, okay, very well. Then I have no report. Um, Madam Clerk, please continue.
Yes, any other committee?
No other committee.
None this evening. Item ten, unfinished business, none this evening. Item eleven, under new business agenda, items, item eleven A, a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida approving and ratifying non-proton that certain expenditure in the amount of ten thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents approved by the City of West Miami City Manager for emergency repairs to the transmission of garbage truck vehicle number sixteen, a copy attached outside DVA payable to Florida Diesel Stewart and Stevenson, providing for effective date. Um, Madam Mayor, if I may yield to Mr. Penn, I think he has a better, um, grip on the status of the, uh, of both gar-, the, the younger garbage truck, which is old now, and then the older one, which is really, really old. So, um, Juan, take it away. I can tell you that we issued payment on a, an emergency basis and because it is over and above my authority to spend, um, money for this type of activity, we brought it to you via a resolution for ratification.
Dana, go ahead.
Well, we have a, two garbage trucks, one that is twenty-five years old and the other one that's about ten years old now, no, thirteen years old. So whichever one you wanna call young or old, it's, but, but to me, they're both old. The older, older one that we're using right now was gonna fall apart one day and we're gonna be really up a creek without no paddle. Uh, the one that we have repairing, we went to pick up and once we started the truck, it had a problem, so it stayed. We didn't get to pick it up. Uh, so right now, it, I, we've been without this truck now since, I believe it was September when we took it in.
Three months ago.
And we were going on four months now without the truck. Uh, uh, they thought they were finished with it and the minute that we went to pick it up, it was running terrible, so we left it there.
You're referring to the twenty-five-year-old truck or the thirteen-year-old truck?
The thirteen.
Actually, it's, it's older than thirteen, Juan. It's older than thirteen, Juan. I hate to break the news to you. We're getting old.
What, what, what is the, I mean, how long, how long should, would these trucks expected to last? Have we gone way over that with these trucks?
On the, on the, on the main truck, yes, we've gone over what we usually keep them for as a main truck. We usually get a main truck every ten to fifteen years.
I, I, I have to say, more often than not, I, when they come down my street, they're using, they were using the, the, the picker-upper the other day because the truck was out of service, so. I mean, I see, I see our, our sanitation group struggling with, with having to use equipment that's not for, that's not the truck, so. I guess, I guess where I'm going is, why aren't we looking at purchasing a new one if we've, if they've, their life expectancy is over and we're spending all this money on repairing something? What, what is stopping us from looking into, I, I know what you're gonna tell me, it's money, but, I mean, how much money we're gonna spend on old trucks before we look at, before we look at replacing them?
Well, priorities, that's all it is.
I have a question.
How often do these trucks break down? Very often is, is, it sounds like, correct?
No, not usually. They're very dependable, but, uh, you gotta realize that while you're using a main truck, the other truck sits on the side and equipment that's not being used, uh, deteriorates. Uh, right now, the truck that we're using, every packing cylinder, the time that truck is leaking because it just sat there for so long without using. Now that we put it back into service, it leaks all over the place. So we can't take it out of service because it has to go to the hydraulic shop and that's a major overhaul of all the cylinders.
I know the one going down my street today was making a horrible noise. It didn't sound normal. So I don't know what was going on with, with today's truck, but I could hear it from blocks away and that, I've never heard that sound coming out of our garbage truck before, so I don't know. Any other questions or comments on this item?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Mr. Penn, uh, the, you made a comment to me that, that this is vehicle sixteen and, uh, and, uh, the repairs were made to the transmission or to the engine?
To the engine.
I'm sorry, it's a, it's like a wrong component of the powertrain. So I'll ask at this point to correct the resolution to, instead of repairs to the transmission, repairs to the engine. Engine. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion on this, Ray?
Yeah. Any, are there any questions? Any other questions? Commissioner Suarez, did you have a question? I thought, I heard.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Call the vote.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Blanca, how did you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Thank you.
Next item.
Last statement on this issue, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, we're gonna be looking at our options and again, the reason, um, as Mr. Penn has said, priorities, this, this has been at the top of our priority list. It's a matter of when the right time is and we have been depleting our reserves in the sanitation division, so we're gonna look at this, uh, for next year and see how we can come up with a lease purchase, um, for a new garbage truck.
I think it's, I think it's time. It's actually.
Definitely.
So, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Yes, item eleven B, update report by the Office of the City Manager and Recreation Center Director on the new guidelines in reference to new activities. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this evening, John has been in isolation just as a precaution. I think he will be returning tomorrow to the park based on what my conversation with Megan today. Um, nonetheless, um, everything remains the same as of Monday of this week. When school began, we have, uh, averaged three days of about twenty-seven kids in the after-school care program. There've been, there have been some calls, some, and, and some possibilities to extend, um, the children to maybe a group of, uh, thirty-five. Uh, we purchased some partitions with use of CARES money because in, initially, we had rented some, but we invested in the permanent, uh, uh, in, in, um, partitions that the, the city can keep for future events or situations. And so we have accommodated these partitions to break the groups for the after-school care. And, and we were reimbursed, we're being reimbursed by CARES, so. That being said, we're going to look at the, um, how we can break up these groups to match the new norm requirements and possibly accommodate a maximum of thirty-five kids in the after-school care program. Regarding activities, all the activities at the park remain the same. The fields are being used by leagues, uh, the T-ball field as well as the baseball field. The basketball courts are being used. The racquetball is actually, to my surprise, being used more so than before. And so, you know, if any given day you pass by there after seven P M. and the, the place is, is packed with athletic activities. So we're, we're happy to see people back in our parks.
I see tennis, well, Madam Manager, the tennis.
The tennis course.
Yeah.
That's right, I missed that, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and, and, and our weekend participation in tennis, because they do provide individual instruction to, for tennis and, and they're adhering to the new norm guidelines as well. So everything is alive and well at the park on that. If you have any questions, we're, we're here, we're available.
I take it we, we do have room for the additional, the parents that have asked. Would you have room to take more children into our after-school program right now?
We are, we are looking to accommodate the room because we do have some of our partitions that came with the building when the building was first constructed. Now, these additional partitions may pave the way for us to break the room in, in in areas where we can extend possibly to the side room and include a few more children, probably a handful of children. We don't want to run the risk of having more than what we, you know, should be having right now. Fortunately, we have had no cases of COVID. We've been extremely careful with the children. We make them wash their hands and wear their masks and maintain their social distancing. So I think we're doing a great job with the monitoring. And, but we, on the other hand, understand that parents need to go to work and need to find a reliable place where they can drop off their kids for care after school.
And I see the children, the after-school children using the playground equipment, so we are continuing to sanitize that on a daily basis, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on, on this item? Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item eleven C, report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to soft reopening of community center, parks and recreation facilities.
Madam Mayor, I know that at the, a couple of meetings ago, we said we would remove this item from the agenda until we're ready to address a possible soft reopening of the community center, as you and I have spoken about. However, the governor extended his emergency order, the governor of the state of Florida, for another sixty days as it pertains to community centers and any activities involving senior citizens. Therefore, I would like to remove this item or maybe we can indefinitely remove the item from the agendas. Until such time, we are able to revisit a soft reopening. Meaning, you know, possibly opening only for West Miami residents when the time comes because we won't be able, we will be have to adhere to the orders in terms of capacity and what type of activities we will bring back. I got to tell you that some of our seniors are dying to get back. I have seen some of them at the grocery store, at the hairstylists, and they're really excited to return to the center. But we can't bring them back, obviously, under the situation and the, the COVID numbers. They are continuing to receive their daily meals and we are checking with them pretty much on a daily basis.
Madam Manager, I think we're going to take this off until at least the governor's either extends or his orders expire. So is there anyone opposed to removing this from the agenda? It definitely until, until the governor's next order. No opposition, Madam Manager, it's removed indefinitely until the governor's next order.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item eleven D, report by the Office of the City Manager and Director of Public Works in reference to FERDAP project eight to one zero one eight, city of West Miami Recreation Center improvements.
We are, Madam Mayor and members of the city commission, we are working on the commencement for the new FERDAP allocation in the amount, award amount in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars from the state of Florida matched by impact fees from the recreation center for an amount of two hundred thousand dollars for a total project of four hundred thousand dollars. The development of this project includes the new playground area, we need to remove, I believe, Mr. Penn, you talked about the area where the monkey bars are at. The old piece will be replaced because we already replaced the actual PlayStation, correct? Okay, so that includes that playground area, a picnic pavilion with a barbecue grill for the, outside the pavilion area, which would make it a little bit more of a, of a better amenity for rental for birthday parties or special events, even for use by our leagues. It includes the restroom renovation in the area where the old weight room or weight, the workout room is at. So those bathrooms will be eliminated and new bathrooms are coming in and they will be adjoined by the weight room. So they will be the new bathrooms to accommodate the new weight room, which is in the pipeline and soon going out to bid. This money is also going to assist the city with the resurfacing of the, the other tennis court and replace the baseball field lights. That's what the development of this project contemplates. We've asked Mr. Alonso to work on giving the city some probable estimates of a statement of probable cost for these pieces of equipment so that we can make sure that the four hundred thousand dollars involved in this particular project will be able to fund all these improvements. Frank, you, you have anything to add to that? I know you're working on these.
Yeah, that's correct, we'll, we'll have that within the next couple of days.
Thank you. So we presented the state today with our first progress report, which is basically we received the fully executed agreement and we are working on the commencement documents. We sent an email to our city attorney because we are going to need an opinion of title and, and some legal work before we start working on the, on the, on the actual project itself.
Let me try to understand these, the bathrooms will be part of the new wellness center?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And of course, the city budgeted, in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we, we budgeted the two hundred thousand dollar match that was transferred in from the rec center impact fees. So this comes at no cost to the taxpayer until, you know, until it reaches sustainability levels.
Well, that's because it will reduce the cost of the wellness center when the time comes a little bit.
Hopefully, hopefully, that was the plan all along.
Any questions for the manager on this item? Okay, next item?
Item eleven E, update in reference to antique car show as requested by Director of Public Works and approved by the city commission and city manager's recommendation to postpone the event.
Madam Mayor, if I may yield to Mr. Penn, who was the person who brought this item to the table. Initially, I'd like to yield to him as a courtesy. He and I have discussed the matter and I think we come to a unified recommendation and I will yield to him on that.
Madam Mayor, as you know, a year ago, we approved the Thunderbird classic cars to find a new home at Cooper Park. And the area at Tropical Park was being turned into a building. And this was prior to COVID, obviously. And because of the high numbers that we are experiencing COVID, it's just a couple of days, a couple of weeks away for the shows to take place. So we reached out to the Secretary of the Thunderbird Club and advised them that we will be postponing the show for a, for a later date this year. And he provided us with an email with several dates. Preferably, his preferred date, I believe, is April twenty-fifth twenty twenty-one, depending on how the numbers are at that point, at that time.
I think that's an excellent.
I have, I have, I have a question for that.
Hi, Commissioner.
Now, one, in, in the month of April, we are already adding a spring. Normally, these show are in winter when the season is in the South Florida, right?
No, the shows take place year round. There's just different car shows happening at the same time during the year. So you try to place yours where it won't compete with others.
So we have, if we have in April, do we have any other show around the area?
No, the next show will be in May, which is the Florida Car Marathon.
Where, where will be that?
That's in May.
But then, which place?
Oh, it's somewhere in Florida. I mean, there's different places. We follow them throughout the year, throughout the, the state of Florida.
Let me ask you the question. If we change it from April, you said in, in, in May, there is another show. The other show in May is close by Miami, South Miami, North Miami?
It could be.
Homestead? They have no, no place yet, they have no, they have no schedule yet.
Well, it's different car clubs, it's not just Thunderbird Car Club, it's different car clubs. There's a classic, American Classic Car Club, there's a the Corvix Club, there's, there's all different kinds of clubs. When they do their shows, they allow other people to participate. So you would, you draw people from, from other groups to come and be part of your show that day. That's why if he, if he has to postpone the date because we're requesting him to postpone the date of the twenty-fourth of January, his preferred date would be April twenty-fifth. He gave us several dates, but his preferred date would be the April twenty-fifth.
And we have, we have planning for January twenty-four? It wasn't the first?
Right, he had planned for January twenty-fourth.
Now, do you think it would be convenient to convince negative, change it for April? Because I think that show is very positive for the city. It's a prestigious thing. And the people who come to the shows are people who take care of their health. People, they don't come with too many childrens. And it's during the day in open space. So I don't think it's a danger about the COVID. I mean, it's not, it's during the day in open spaces. So January is the perfect time, is the season in South Florida. In my idea, in the knowledge, I know because being in those shows.
Commissioner, if I may, yes, there, contrary to what, what you're thinking, there are a lot of children that go, this is a family event and there are a lot of children. But Commissioner Blanca has a comment, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, even in April, I think it's too soon with this new virus. We should postpone it, we don't know until when. But April is too soon. That is my suggestion.
Any other questions or comments on the table?
So I want to know, I have another question. Hello? Now, my question is this. This is Penn brought this last year. Now, Yolanda is proposing, the actual manager is proposing to change the date. Mr. Penn, the, the Thunderbird Club is, is agreeing with the April, is okay for them?
Yes, they provided us with a memorandum with different dates and April twenty-fifth was their preferential date.
And it's okay for them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, it's too soon with this new mutation on this virus. This virus is more contagious than the other one. April will be in the middle of this thing.
Well, I make a motion to, to make it April.
Well, we don't need a motion, this is just an update from staff on, on this, on the, on the planned antique car show. We don't need a motion, this is a report from staff.
We would rather have a consensus of the, of the commission as to moving it to April twenty-fifth.
We'll take a consensus. Is there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Blanes, did you have anything?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm thinking that by April, everything's going to be gone. I think it's all going to disappear.
That's nobody, I don't, these people say, they don't, they don't say that, please.
I think, I think, I think with the new administration.
You're out of your mind.
They're going to, they're going to be really working on it and I, I get the feeling that, you know what, maybe even sooner than April.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
That's my sentiment, I think April's okay.
Yeah, we're not going to discuss the virus or, or, or the, the the virus, the antidote or the vaccine right now. This is about antique car show. So Vice Mayor, did you have anything?
No, I, I, I think, you know, I'm not a fortune teller, so I can't say if April is going to be good or not. You have some things that are Johnson that say they'll have a lot of vaccines out. We don't know if vaccines will work on new strain. But I, I'm, you know, again, I don't think it's a real liability for the city to say instead of April. And if, if it can't be done.
We can look at it then.
If they look at it then, and Thunderbird's going to have to deal with it. And I'm sure they, there are, they are also very worried about that too, because I don't think they want to have a car show.
Absolutely.
So I, I would be a favor of moving the gen to April and then, of course, if it can't be done, you know, it's unfortunate, but, you know.
We, i- i- if, if I may, Madam Mayor, I, I will ask Mr. Penn to continue keeping this in, in his list of priorities and we can revisit this pretty much every thirty days. I think we owe the gentleman the courtesy of having enough time to plan so he can prepare his marketing tools or public relations and information regarding the show. So I, I think we should monitor it for the next thirty days and see how the situation unfolds and come back to you and let you know whether we need to change it or revisit the, the issue again.
Because I'd like to make a last comment, may I?
Go right ahead, sir.
I think we should bring that show to our city because our city is in the center of the county, close to Cora Gables, close to Pine Crest, close to very good places that people have those cars. And this is a very prestigious and very good thing for our city to have that event in our city.
Agreed, sir, we're not, we're not saying we're not, we're just, we're just putting it, delayed it for a little while. But yes, we all agree that it is coming, it'll be a great thing for the city. We're just going to delay it for a little bit.
You're not going to know anything about the virus in thirty days.
All, all in agreement for moving this date pending, I mean, tentatively, April twenty-fifth? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Madam Manager, Mr. Penn, please let the antique car show know that we're accepting his preferred date, but again, this is all pending on COVID nineteen and vaccines and whatnot.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item twelve, consent agenda items, none this evening. Item thirteen, good of the order?
Anything for good of the order? I have something quickly, thank you all for being here.
I, I've got something.
Major, yes, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
So this is just a friendly observation for everyone. Everyone on this Zoom meeting is wearing reader glasses. The only one that's not is the Vice Mayor. So Vice Mayor, please tell us that you are in denial. Because if not, we're going to feel really old.
Yeah, I, I don't know what to tell you, I'm sorry.
I have something for the good of the order.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'd like to show my bride.
Oh my goodness, look at that, yes, he wasn't supposed to be here and he's here. Oh my God, that is gorgeous, sir. Thank you for sharing that.
After sixty years, he's in love as he was the first day.
As he should be, congratulations.
That's not a fact, as a matter of fact, I am more in love.
One of these days, you're going to have to tell us all your secrets, sir, not now, not now, one of, one of these days.
Be careful what you ask for.
You know what, you and I, after COVID, we'll go out for coffee and I want to hear your secret. I certainly do. Beautiful, oh my God, thank you so much for sharing that. Gorgeous.
Congratulations, Mr. Rialoos.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good night.
And I look forward um to this next year. It's gonna be a much better year. I look forward to working with every single one of you. For the greater good of the city of West Miami. Good night to all. Be safe, stay healthy.
Night.
Next time.